So, Mr. Price, do you have a wireless microphone upstairs?
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Mel McLeary Price and I live in Lafayette, Morrison, Alvin, Arkansas. And I'm going to tell you why we need a rent freeze. We're going to start with the demographics of this borough. First of all, seven, we have 12 community boards in this borough. Seven out of 12 of those boards are in poverty, living poverty. The community board we're sitting in is the highest poverty community board in this whole borough. We also sit in a district that has the highest homeless population. We also sit in a district that people in this district, their income is about $10,000 to $12,000. So, my question to you is, how can we raise the rent on families who can't afford where they're living at at the present time? We have seniors that may be victims at an alarming rate. So, any little increase in dollars, how big, how small, will put more seniors in the street, where they will be living in shelters, where, I think, at the golden age, I don't need to be living in the shelters, I need to be living in my own home. They cannot survive it. So, we need to really look at that. Also, we have to look at, yes, we went up to $50,000, that's only seniors. But if we raise rent here for those mothers, which 53% of this borough is single women, single moms, there is no subsidy out there. And the law that's going around the corner and housing court on a daily basis will be going around blocks if you raise the rent. So, this is why we need a rent freeze. When you go from borough to borough, find out what the demographics are in the borough. Find out who is really suffering, and then make your decision. And I think at the end of that, you will find out there will be no rent freeze. We need a freeze. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Price, and Mr. Johnson. If we could have Aurora carry on, Ian Davies, and Maple Blandino. Aurora, carry on.
Good evening, members chair and the members. First of all, I want to thank you for being here. It's been a while since the board has been down here in the Bronx. Because usually they have meetings down at the reunion or down low in Manhattan, where the people from this area from the Bronx are not able to get down there. And another thing too is that you have sat here and you have really listened to what we have to say. I've been to a lot of these meetings, and usually the people who sit up there have no interest. And they don't miss it. They get up, they're on the phone, whatever. So, I want to thank you for sitting here and listening to me. One of the things, I've lived here in the Bronx for over 43 years, where I am right now. I have raised three children. And the rents have gone up, it's incredible when it's gone up. The rents go up, but your income doesn't go up. People retire, and what they get from social security and the pensions, it's not enough to cover what you're asking now for rent, what you're asking now for rent. The landlords come in, you have new landlords that come in, especially where we live at. They vacate the apartments, people move out, and the rents go up by three times of one. You're going to see here, tenants staying there. They fix up the apartment, and they're able to get away where acting at least outrageous amounts of rent. Because they're going to be flawed, they're paying, they do lose, you know, whatever it is. But they have these people coming in, and then they can't afford the rent. So, they stay in for maybe a couple of months or a year, they leave, somebody else comes in, the rent has gone up another 20%, or whatever, 30%. So, an apartment that started out as paying, that saved for whatever room apartment, started out maybe $600, now it's up to $1,400. I mean, this has to stop. Because landlords get in the way with a lot of things. They're decreasing the help that they have, the people who work in the building. But we have to see now, there are orders who work the fire quarters. Now it's down to two. So that they have to take care of everything, and of course, it's not the same. So, you don't have the tenants or anything else that you had before. So, they keep on increasing, but it's not fair for the tenants. And I understand that everybody needs to do it, but it has to stop at this point. And I hope that you think of giving a freeze of anything for the next two years, so that things become a little easier for everyone who's here and everybody here in the city. Because your drunks driving is out of the city, and I think it's totally unfair. And we've made the Bronx to come up as it is now because we've stood here. We haven't left. Because I think it's unfair.
Good evening, everybody on the board. Good evening, everybody in the audience. My name is Maple Blandino. I'm a part-timer, so it's killing me. I was in the system, I was thankful for everything, I'm not ashamed of it. I worked with the Department of Education now in the part-time. And I love my kids, and I love everything. But I had an issue with the courts, housing court. My daughter passed away in June of last year. My granddaughter stood out without a house because the stupid landlord, it's a pride of old landlord, and didn't have the heart, and he wanted her out. And she was on the lease. But he made her life miserable. I took her to the court, housing court, and they treated us like nothing. I was very offended the way they would treat us. We need people to help us, to know our rights, to do what we're supposed to do for we could keep our house. And I'm here because of my granddaughter. Because now she's with me, and Section 8 is kicking in now. And that's all I have to say. But it really hurts me that the system doesn't help. Because the court, when I went to court with her, I felt like crying. Because you see, people with children on the aisle, sitting, waiting for them, for they could hear their problems. Sometimes they will come out of that court crying. And then when you go downstairs to get help, oh, what do you think? We're going to give you help? You'll have to look for help. You don't treat us like that. We have dignity. You know? Come on! We need your help with our rent control and everything, whatever we could get. And I'm proud of myself of where I came and my family. Thank you.
And if we have Sonia Marbidas and Donal Lyons.
Welcome to the Bronx. My name is Ian Davies. This testimony is submitted on behalf of Legal Services NYC Bronx. Legal Services NYC provides free legal services and civil matters to low-income households and to tenants throughout New York City. Our neighborhood offices operate diverse communities throughout the city, representing thousands of low-income tenants annually in disputes involving prevention of eviction and enforcement of tenants' rights. New York is in a housing crisis, we all know that. And the preservation of affordable housing is at the center of the struggle for low-income New Yorkers. Rent-stabilized tenants already suffer from very high New York City of 18.2% below the poverty line. According to the Board 2014 Income and Affordability Study, the number of families relying on cash assistance, public assistance, increased from 2012 to 2013. The number of recipients of SNAP food stamps increased for the 11th consecutive year in 2013. Tenants in rent-stabilized housing have a median income of $37,000 and pay 34.9% of their income in gross rent. Meaning, a majority of rent-stabilized tenants are not able to meaningfully afford their rent. Now meanwhile, over the past two decades, landlord incomes and rents have outpaced costs. And as a result, net operating income has increased from 2011 to 2012, growing at a rate of 9.6%. The results are pretty telling. According to this board's April 2014...
I never pictured myself to be a single mother of three kids. I got the apartment right now by spending on an education in Golden Heights. This was about seven years ago. But within these seven years, I have had to apply for a one-shot deal. I've been to housing court to separation numerous of times. And ordered to show cause. And the most recent hardship was getting our daddy apartment and staying up for three weeks because I couldn't pay the martial fee, even though I paid the rent of years. Oh, I will pay for the martial fee. So, I know this probably sounds familiar because I know a lot of people that go through this. And even worse than ever is when they end up homeless and not going back to their apartment. As a result of this type of thing, my family and I have to be stressed here on a regular level because my children are only 16, 11, and 10, and they already know what insomnia, they already know what sleeping, and some of the words, sleeping, some of those, you know.
I don't know if you can do it or not, if you can do it.
And there's... So, um... This sounds like most of your room. So, I get to say to say that the root to our problem is not that most of us don't have a job, it's our rent. We don't have this income. So, I have a job. I work for something that doesn't get released. And this job is a state, I'm a state worker. So, I am the working force. That's what I consider myself, the working force. And so far, it's the same salary every year, every year the same salary. My rent is supposed to go according to my salary. So, I don't know how it increases when I don't get a raise. So, um, we basically dealt with the increase of the MTE, the bridges, the fairs. We also all had our DTRs and food stamps. I'm still trying to recover from those two shocks that they gave us. And then now, you know, one year, two years, it really passes by really quickly. Before you know it, the increase is adding, and it just keeps bringing us down, going down, down, down. So, some of the conditions that I live in now is no safety in the building. We don't have security, working hours, nothing. We have loadings, roches, we have lorries. I think that, I feel that if the landlords invest in repairing and keeping the tenants in the building safe, maybe they also will save some money on, you know, on, they will also save some money. So, they don't always have to try to take it out of us. So, I'm talking to several parents who try to raise peace and human skills when law is in danger. I'm just asking if you can come in for help and give us a break or some support.
If there are specific conditions that you're concerned about, please do fill out a form. Because we would be against very much. We want to help as much as we can, and we will bring your information to the Department of Public Safety. I'll see if you can address that.
Rachel, I just want to call to the board's attention that, as of right now, there are a couple hundred people outside trying to get into this hearing. And the police are not letting people in, they're laying a minute. They said five to 10 there at a time. So, there are hundreds of people who are trying to come into this hearing and be able to listen to this public hearing. At this point, they are being guarded by the police from doing that. There's some serious concerns about it moving forward by the police. This is a public hearing, and I understand security concerns, but thank you for letting us in.
We're on opposite ends, we're trying to have as many members of the public hearing as we possibly can. I know, but thank you very much, Marcus, for bringing this to our attention.
You guys, there's a hundred tenants outside, and you're not letting them in.
They're putting me at the mercy of the city.
I don't want to hear that.
We're all in here for the people.
Thank you so much. And the reason why I'm here is because I've been laid off three times since 2008. I'm a single parent, I just started working recently in May. I've been back to house and court first time due to me collecting unaccounted. However, I'm trying to balance out keeping full and also providing a roof over my child's head. My daughter, she just turned 20 one day. I have her in school, she doesn't have no choice but to go to college. There's no, there's no negotiation with that. However, I as a single parent, I still have to provide a roof over my child's head. For $8.25 for her to work, it's, for me, it's not gonna happen. I'd rather for her to get her education. But yet, at the end of the day, I am the head of the household and I have to be required. By this rent increase, it's gonna make even strenuous one. Even if you go to park the food stamps, and half the time they cut you, they just lower the food stamps. So we're not getting no, no rent, no pay, no pay raise. And at the meantime, it's very difficult as a single parent. For y'all in the household, I've been lied, single parents, single household. And it's very difficult. We don't need a little rent increase, we really don't. And I ask that you guys, hope money not to be increased. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Good evening. My name is Shavat Grohman, and I'm actually a resident of 502 West 148th Street, New York. Here's number one, and I'm actually testifying and speaking in solidarity with the many Bronx tenants that are behind me, who will probably, one after the next, after the next, and I ask this board for a rent freeze. I know that this is the first out-of-borough hearing of three, and I personally want to represent the board on having out-of-borough hearings for the first time in two years, so way to go. And I know that if every other borough knows this, we're gonna put the same question that sends me a rent freeze. I moved to Harlem in 2010 and lived in a two-bedroom front for apartment in a formerly regulated building. It wasn't long before our rent became unaffordable, and my partner and I had to look around for other options. Our rent went up $100 a year every year for three years. And even just on two full-time salaries, the money we were spending on rent let us look less and less. Had our building remained stabilized, we could have probably stayed, and we did look into other places, and eventually landed somewhere where we could afford it. But my intent in relating my experiences to highlight that we were the exception and not the rule. In the years that this board has voted to raise rents in regulated units, tenants who cannot afford them do not find themselves in co-host condos or even nicer apartments. They find themselves doubled or tripled up in smaller places, or living with family, friends, and most likely living in homeless shelters. Tenants all over the city, in the Bronx, in Brooklyn, in Queens, cannot afford this anymore. You, you guys know this, okay? Incomes remain flat, and rents have far exceeded them, and this is not new information. The data has borne this out again and again and again, and just to give you some testimony which you heard earlier. Tenants need a rent freeze, thank you.
Patricia Charles and Liza Ash, please.
My name is Ivy Vias.
Oh, thank you, thank you.
So I actually have to support myself and my uncle. And we can afford, me and my other daughter, when I would have our own apartment, she would do two, one night.
Can you speak to the microphone, see what you're hearing?
Yeah, so I just think, think from myself and also my uncle. I have my, I have a daughter who's one night, one night ago, when I had my own apartment, and the rent was really high. By that time, on the other end, he, he was breaking, but what he made, thirty-three for the rent. He had to post two months, two weeks and a half to get paid for all of the rent. So that's, the rent was really high, so we had to move in to some other family numbers to be affordable. And I provided food and, and my daughter. And now, I left my own school, the rent is trying to raise up. I've been here for more than ten years, and the rent's still going up. And for the thing that I, the rent just stopped going up, because people, the landlords, they're gonna rise the rent, but when they want to trick something, I've been having problems with it right now. There's more everywhere, the landlord wants to pay, wants the rent paid on time and everything, right? But they're not doing, they're not fixing everything, all the apartments, there's an air problem with water and everything, and they're not implementing the policies, they all want this to rise, to rise up. So I'm saying that, that rent should not be going up when, that's okay, that's not the thing for the landlord to take the money, but they are doing the job too, for us, to give us the rent. So they should fix everything before they keep raising the rent, that's what I'm saying.
Thank you, Shavat Grohman. Again, we're looking at lack of information, and then they're gonna share with the other agencies that have some authority for that. So they have a very good testimony. Sharon Walls.
Good evening, board. My name is Shavat Grohman, I live in the Bronx, and I've lived there, been there, going on eighteen years. I raised my daughter there, my daughter's in college right now. My problem with the landlord is, he keeps going up on the rent, and he keeps giving the admission of his sister. Because I, uh, uh, go to HBD when he doesn't do the proper repairs in the apartment. If he had the audacity to call me and say to me, "Miss Walls, why didn't I sit HBD on that?" How dare he say that to me? My bathroom floor was, was sunk in and everything, you know? And my thing is this, right? The door is always broken, but you wanna raise the rent. I just got a rent increase July, June 1st, okay? And I just got an increase for my job for 2%. My little increase is gone, okay? My daughter's in college, and I'm like the other lady, my daughter has to go to college, okay? She's 22 years old, they told me, she's an adult, she needs, the judge had the nerve to tell me, she needs to get a job. How dare you? And this is the stuff that goes on in housing, darling, the way they treat the man. Okay? My daughter needs to go to school, I'm still head of household, and we do not need another rent increase, because my daughter needs to go to college, that is no option, okay? So that she can have a better life for herself, I'm trying to make her a better life for herself, I'm trying to do that for her. And that's what, figure the cost of living is ridiculous in New York, and by the rent going up, the trains go up, the, the comments goes up, you have to, I put my bills in the basket, and the first one, I said, I know I gotta pay my rent. My lights went out three times because I had to pay my friggin' rent, because I wanted to keep a roof over my head. And the landlord, the owner, the manager, the board, the chairman, the five members, they don't have anybody to support the garbage. The garbage in front of the building is ridiculous and rass. I prayed one night, and I had my little black man by my foot. It doesn't make sense, so they do not deserve another rent increase, okay? Until they give us better services.
So, good evening, passions, decisions, ma'am, and we really would urge you to fill out your, 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 yes, there's a form, please do, thank you. Patricia Charles, Liza Ash, and Anna Ross.
Patricia Charles, Bronx East City Gardens. We all have the same problems here. The developments that we live in used to be preventable, and everybody brought in homeless. They allowed us, they didn't allow the tenants who were in good standing to transfer into different apartments like they used to, that would keep developments in good standing against the, falling down. Everybody needs a roof over their head, but they could at least assist some of the tenants that are coming in to respect.
If people could write down a little bit, I'm gonna get a hard time hearing this call.
Also, my daughter, my son, and myself, three, three rents coming in. However, they use my daughter's rent as the head of household, but I'm the head of household. Just because her rent is, her income is more than mine, they use her income as the boost, my income as the head of household. I don't understand that, so that's another issue. But when it comes to us keeping a roof over my head, we need, we need to roll back the rent, it's freezing, it can freeze as well. This is what we want to do, roll back and freeze it, because the rent they're setting, you want us to go back. You don't want us to stay in the housing, and you want us to go out and, and buy a, a home. We can't even afford a home, because our homes are like cymbals. You want us to pay $750,000 on a home, wouldn't it, it not even worth it? Because we watched the building, okay? All of these contractors and accommodations into the areas, they're building things that are not worth living in. And the only people that are jumping in are people that don't understand how it's going up. So that's another issue. So what I'm saying to you is, we ask you to roll back the rent and freeze it, so we can live. I can't go to movies, I can't go to the wrestling ones, even the older, the older, the movies, the wrestling ones, they're, they're even calling me, they'll switch the support, because we can't go out there and enjoy ourselves, okay? They can't even keep a roof over their head, because we can't afford to go out there and splurge it and have a little time to ourselves in our areas. So, please trust us, that you need to hear our voices, loud and clear. So, and I don't even ask them to repair things for myself, I repair my own things. Classroom, I do, and painting, I do. I need to be able to take that off of my rent, because they can't, they can't come in to, uh, to, 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 to.
Liza Ash. I'm a hall of fame, sorry, original. They are saying that there's no more space in the hearing, and there are seven seats in there.
I know Anthony's gone up to do his best to take care of it, but I want to make sure that we're aware that the same thing that happened in the primary hall is happening once again, where people are not having access to the information that we're discussing, and it's a public hearing, I, I would hope that, you know, we do our best to make sure that that happens. We really do appreciate the passion that people are bringing here, and we are, we are here as long as people want to testify.
Is that, I'm, 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 I'm basically here to testify, because you see, Black Lady Forni said, not only should you freeze the rent, you should reverse it, because personally, in my building, the landlords, the owners, have taken advantage of us. Well, a one-bedroom in my area is costing that basic rent $2,000. And the last one, bought our building, in the past seven years, rent has been, has gone from, you could say, illegal or basically market amount, to ridiculous amount, to the point that where people can't afford this rent, so they give them preferential rent. For tenants who've lived in the building like myself or four, I can't get a transfer, because they don't want old tenants moving into larger apartments, because we know how much the rent is supposed, how much rent is supposed to be. I did, I personally, I did, I have, in my apartment, there's five of us, there's my kids and my boyfriend, and it's a studio. Right now, I'm on the list for a transfer, which I know I'm not gonna get, although they are paying apartments. The rent is ridiculous in my apartment, in my building. There's no control, I would invite the mayor to open an investigation, because by not freezing the rent, by not putting a check on landlords, you're basically allowing a lot of illegal activities to happen when these landlords are taking this as basically a, a business. It's becoming a business, where they're just marking up the rent, and we have like ten people living in a one-bedroom because they can't afford. I've had ACS come tell me that the apartment is too small, but ACS can't do anything, because my other option is to move in for shelter. All the programs are closed, because no, the programs can't afford to pay these rent anymore. Not only are the programs closing, there is nowhere else that we can do. So I, I'm begging, basically, that she takes some action in this, and like she, like Lady Forni said, not only freeze the rent, investigate and retract the rent.
Shavat Grohman, then Grace Torres and Catherine Wilson.
Hi, my name is Ellen Holtz, and I'm a, I'm a, my name is Ellen Holtz, member organizer of the New Settlement Care Action Committee. I've also worked as an education organizer, an education advocate for families living in transitional housing. You've heard from all these tenants tonight, what happens when rents go up and tenants get evicted. It's not just that their housing is being abused. I think there are two stories you need to hear about what happens to children when their families are evicted. The first story I want to tell you is about a child named Jessica. So Jessica's family was evicted from their housing because they couldn't pay rent, they were on a meaningless premise. Meanwhile, she was supposed to enter kindergarten, want her family wife to enroll her in the school where she did her free day. She was told she couldn't enroll at the school, because of the change in manners. This is wrong, you have the right under federal law to attend the school of origin, but she was told this, and graduated by the school. So it should have been simple, but it took two agencies, three DOE offices, four weeks, to get this child re-enrolled in school. Meanwhile, she missed the first two weeks of kindergarten, she couldn't miss any more days for the rest of the year, and still be promoted to first grade. And she needed to stay in that school, because we know, this is well-known, that when a child changes schools, they lose four to six months of academic progress. If you change schools twice in one year, that's like losing a whole year of school. And this is why when you look at students who are in transitional housing, they are eight to nine times more likely to be held back than they're here. Twenty percent of children who are living in shelters in New York have been held back from the rights. And as the housing crisis has escalated, more and more of these students are in fewer schools. They are in districts that have the roads cheap, they are in the schools that are priority and focus, don't have the knowledge or resources to support these families each night. They're struggling just to get their test scores up, let alone to help families deal with the kind of crises they're facing. You want to look at the paper in front of you, you'll see that here in the Bronx, in the central Bronx, there's the highest rates of students living in transitional housing anywhere else in the city. Fourteen percent of students in our district, three years ago, three years ago, were living in transitional housing. So 35,000, 5,000 are living in transitional housing. And there are the small cluster elementary schools, middle and high schools, that have the lowest performance of any school in our district. I think the other story you need to hear is about what happens if you get, right? Heard about Jessica at the beginning, kindergarten. When these kids get up in age, are they able to graduate, or they're not able to? So James's students are starting Head Start on Pepper West Side. He, as the rent went up, his family would be further out, further out, he's caroling to Washington Heights, Mountain Bronx. He's 18, he's attending school at a focus school here in the Bronx, one of the lowest performing schools in the city. But he loves wine, he loves buildings, he wants to be an architect, he wants to be an architect. He can read at the level of fifth grade. I think you know that that's not possible for him now. It's extremely important that when you go into things, that you think about Jessica, that you think about James, that you think about these children have a right to receive a good education. And you should know that right now in New York City, they're not getting it, and you have the power to fix that.
Shavat Grohman, Grace Torres, and then Catherine Wilson, who is a tenant of Shavat here. Okay, thanks.
Good evening, my name is Grace Torres. I would like to welcome the new members of the board, and hope that you will make a reasonable and equitable decision. I lived in the Bronx for 39 years, I am the president of my tenants association, and I am a castle leader. We help tenants organize and learn their rights. My landlord is Steven Pinklestein, uh, Pinklestein and Tenerga and et cetera. No, to help the advocates and helping organizations in the Bronx, at the MCI PK. I am here today to give a voice to so many tenants that are being terrorized by greed-stricken, unscrupulous landlords that will do anything to force tenants out of their homes, because these are not just apartments, these are our homes. We were punished by the RGP with a $45 increase for living longer than six years in our apartments. Since then, we have been charged multiple MCIs that have raised our rents by more than $340. The RGP's yearly rent increases, landlords that are collecting permanent MCIs increases should not get city increases. This is not about taxes, water, sewer rates, or energy rates going up. This is greed, pure greed. These large, state companies are getting tax evasion, rent subsidies, state and federal funds to offset their costs. And they are still passing these increases onto tenants by using the loopholes in state laws. That has not been fair. These landlords are doing this legalized racketeering that would have made us a poor town and worse than we thought it would be. In the past year, my landlord has acquired numerous new properties in the Bronx, and there are ten street-level businesses that are paying property taxes in their leases, because this is a requirement, if you wanna rent a space in these neighborhoods, you have to pay their property taxes, which is illegal. But yet, it's done, and they have to shut up, and a lot of mom and pops have closed down the businesses. They cannot afford to stay here anymore. And that's another revenue that they are making, okay? And now more than ever, tenants are doubling up in order to pay their rents or have moved out of New York City totally. I ask you, is the tale of two cities going to change under the de Blasio administration? Or will it be business and corruption as usual? In this time, as this board show New York City tenants the fact they deserve by rolling for a rent freeze. I made an effort to be here today, so I expect you to do the right thing for the tenants of New York City.
Shavat Grohman, Catherine Wilson, and Juan Morales.
My name is Shavat Zai. I'm a property owner, and I live in the Bronx as well, and I came to here for a time, and listening to a lot of tenants, and a lot of my valuable points. But, you know, if you look at the, the way the world rolls, and the realistic, the reality that we live in, it takes money to improve. A lot of you guys are complaining about conditions throughout your buildings. I, I do, I do, I do hardly go out and see new properties to purchase at times, and I do see a lot of buildings that are rundown. Unfortunately, for, for landlords to see a, a market rent, say, for example, take a number of $800, if the apartment is certainly $800, you have to put a minimum $20,000 renovation in order to get a rent, or achieve a rent of anywhere between $1,200 and $1,300. Now, those are numbers that are registered.
They're painted and naive. You can get increases. We know they just love, the commissioner ordered him to do work in the building. He didn't opt in, he falsifies some paperwork, but MCI, county M rule. Well, we know what to do. If we go and try again, that, that is not for the tenants. I'm gonna tell you, board, now, do the right thing. No increase or no landlord unless they do work for the tenants. We outstand no, no increase. They don't deserve.
We, we, we're down, and then all the other.
Yes, my name is Sigo Freyral Forman.
I'm sorry. Don't worry, she's down here, she's right there.
Here now.
Down here, if you're out there.
Hello, everybody. My name is Jeannie Duclal, and I'm with Rena Riverside Edge Home Neighborhood and Housing. Actually, we invited some of the house, we're all gathered around, people came from work. We came because, to this particular hearing, because the Bronx is closer to us in our hearts, and also in physically, it's closer to us. So, I've testified many, many years. This is the first time I have any hope. This is the first time I'm getting up, and I'm not saying, which I said before, this is a farce. I said that every year, because it was a farce. This year, for the first time, let's hope it's not gonna be a farce, and this will be real. I have a question to ask you, just for your consideration. How much rent can a family of two adults and two children earning an income of $34,043 a year afford? This is the average income, I'm talking Washington Heights, okay? The Bronx is probably even lower. Okay? If we consider an affordable rent, which is a joke, to be 30% of their income, which is a joke, but that's what's considered affordable, that rent, and I did the calculation, you could all do it, would be $972. Now, a family of four needs at least two bedrooms, if not three, if the two children are different sexes. The apartment would have to be at least, at least two bedrooms. Can anyone on the RGP let me know where such an apartment could be found? Can you find us, what you, landlord, can you find us? Don't all the members of the RGP already know that low-income working people cannot afford to pay these rents? Don't all the members of the RGP already know that in Harlem and Washington Heights, studio apartments are renting for over $1,000 a month? That's cheap for a studio apartment, that's cheap for a studio apartment. Section 8 doesn't exist anymore, etc.
Right here, right here, it exists.
Yeah, most people who had it, it exists, but nobody can now apply for it, because it doesn't exist anymore. Many hard-working families will face eviction, because they cannot afford their rents. Is this the kind of city the RGP wants to be part of?
Yes!
For the landlords who complain, and they all complain, why don't they apply for hardship increases? There's a law that says that if a landlord really isn't making 6% profit, they can apply for hardship increases. Is there any mom-and-pop business that can apply for a decrease in their rent? They're not making a 6% profit? Is there any other industry in this country that is guaranteed a profit by the government? In this case, the city of New York? Why don't you all be my guests, apply for your hardship increases, if you can open your books?
They don't have a house in the books!
That's the point. In Washington Heights, speaking, we have, I, I really appreciate it, that's my, please do wrap it up, yeah. In Washington Heights, this crisis has been building, that's true, the whole city. And now we're facing the prospect of massive homelessness. People come to Rena, that's our organization, they used to come complaining about falling ceilings and leaking faucets and no paint.